The July 20th, 2021 meeting of the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Philginsy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, inform us present.
Thank you. The first item on our zoning agenda, docket number 2021-027, for the property located at parcel one of 1301 West Washington Street and parcel two, 1409 West Washington Street. Petitioner is Wabash Crossing LLC. Present zoning classification is parcel one, R3B, general residence district, section 155.018. And parcel two, R2-2, single-family and duplex residence district, section 155.017. Requested zoning relief parcel one, a variance of section 155.056, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow the use of a 68-unit apartment on a lot containing 75,272 square feet instead of the 170,000 square feet required. And section 155.091, required accessory off-street parking spaces, residences to allow 73 off-street parking spaces instead of the 102 required. Parcel two, reclassification of R3B, general residence district, section 155.018, and a CPU pursuant to 155.018C2 and 155.183 for the accessory off-street parking, not on the same zoning lot as used to serve, and allow 32 spaces to be used for parcel one and a variance of section 155.480I1-5. Landscape screening and lighting regulations, transitional buffer yard requirement and landscape to allow a reduction of the transitional buffer yard on the north and west sides to zero feet. A solid six-foot fence will be built on the north and west border of the parcel, and a 50% open fence will be built along Columbia and Washington to limit foot traffic to the parking lot. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval as submitted. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is approval as submitted. Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the recommendation of staff and the planning and approve this ordinance.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation
as submitted. Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to, first of all, thank everyone for their patience with this zoning case. It has -- this parcel is located on West Washington Street, across the street from SHG. There are apartments that have fallen into disrepair would be a polite term. The developer in this case and SHG have been working for quite some time. We have an agreement that includes enhanced luxury apartments, security lighting, security cameras with storage of security film for seven days, and an agreement to cooperatively use this footage with the police department, an onsite manager for the facility, and really an overall improvement to the neighborhood. I appreciate everyone's patience. I appreciate the developer for coming in with a concept that's going to bring some very nice apartments into the heart of Ward Eight. And I look forward to seeing this development move forward and very strongly request your yes votes on this project.
Alderman Donlin.
Uh-oh.
Thank you, Mayor. I just don't trust the microphone that you guys put in front of me, but anyway, it's a whole different story. But I just want to thank Alderwoman Conley. Different perspective here, wow. I just want to thank Alderwoman Conley for all your hard work on this and Alderman Hanauer and others because this is something that's gone on now with two different owners, and it's something that has been an eyesore for that neighborhood for quite some time. And SHGs and the developers' cooperation are much appreciated. I know we're going to see something improved on the near west side and a reuse of some existing buildings, and this is something we all talk about for economic development. So I urge an I vote. Thank you.
I would also add that we have included the Neighborhood Association in our conversations and actually was talking to some of the neighbors on the way into the meeting. So very excited about this development in Ward Eight.
Any other discussion? Alderman McMiniman.
Two questions so far. Has the agreement that was just referred to been circulated?
It was just signed, so no, it is not. I'd be happy to get you a copy of that as long as I don't think the developer would have any problems.
And it was just signed by whom?
SHG and the developer.
Was it signed by the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association?
No, it's not.
Have they seen the agreement?
They have seen a draft of it. The only changes were to -- so I don't know -- and maybe, Mayor, if we could call the attorney for the developer up for this.
So the answer to that question is that the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association has not seen a final agreement? Is that correct?
I can't answer that question, Alderman. I try to keep my sides clean here. But I know that Mr. Horseman and Sister have been talking to the Neighborhood Association. We met with -- we all met with Alderman Conley last week. We talked about some changes, and frankly, the only major change to the agreement since that time was that we made -- the developer made some promises, made some agreements to monitor their parking lot, and we simply added language that SHG would monitor their parking lots as well.
And actually, the language includes that the developer and the management of the apartment complex will also monitor for unauthorized parking in the neighborhood, the surrounding area, which includes the neighborhood around the apartments.
The answer to the question is that the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association has not seen a final agreement? Is that correct?
I don't -- I --
You have not given it to them, is that correct?
I have not. Not my job to give it to them, Alderman. I believe that should fall on Mr. Horseman and SHG. And --
Who's Mr. Horseman?
Mike Horseman of Sorling represents SHG.
I see. Well, I think it's very important to involve our neighborhood associations in all these kinds of developments. The Historic Westside Neighborhood Association's been active for over 40 years, and they've been very active in this case. And it's kind of like an ambush at the last minute if something's been agreed to, but they don't know what the exact terms are.
There's no ambush.
We can't assume that they're in agreement with this, and so that'd be the reason for my no, but I'd just like to hear from Historic Westside Neighborhood Association. It's not your fault. It's not your fault. It's just a fact of the process.
Kerry was at the -- the president of the Westside Neighborhood Association was at the meeting last Tuesday, Wednesday, whenever it was, and is well aware of what we're doing and --
Was very supportive of the proposal and the path forward that we're taking.
Well, if they're in support of it, it would have been very helpful to have some kind of representative of their body or some kind of writing from them, because they've been following this for six months, so.
No, they've been following this for three and a half years.
They've followed it longer than that, and I don't think that we can hold this up just because they weren't able to have somebody here. I mean, that's not -- we've included them in the conversations.
Is there anybody from the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association here or SHG that wish to speak to this? Then, for the record, Don Craven is at the podium. Any other discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Alderwoman Conley, I think, just a point of clarification. Last month, didn't you say to this body that you planned on bringing this up for a vote today?
Yes.
It has been delayed long enough. I mean, said that publicly, very clearly.
Yeah, and we actually held the first zoning case for six months and then dismissed it, so in favor of this one that we held, forget an additional month to ensure we had adequate time to discuss it.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yep, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Well, I guess, since Alderman Donlin, you addressed the question to Alderwoman Conley. Alderwoman Conley, when was your last conversation with the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association?
Last week.
Last week. And who's the president?
That's Kerry. He was at the meeting with us.
And when was the agreement reached, the final agreement?
Today.
About 2:30.
Okay. Did you attempt to call the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association after the final agreement was reached?
No, Joe, I actually have another daytime activity, my job, so I was not able to reach out to them. I did, however, on the way over here, call some of the neighbors who live directly across the street from this site. And I'd just like to say, I appreciate the input that Kerry had as representing the Historic Westside. I do think for the stability of this neighborhood, having what is a very dangerous situation resolved, and not only resolved, but we're looking at security cameras that will provide footage to the police for other activity that goes on in that neighborhood. I worry about some of the -- some things that have been going on in that area. I talked to the police department about my concerns for that area, and I'm actually really -- I'm very excited to see that we're going to have not just construction of high-quality -- they're calling them luxury apartments, but also apartments that look out for the neighborhood with security cameras and a cooperative agreement where they'll be making those available, held for seven days, a minimum of seven days, and available for our police department if they need it.
Okay, well, I think that's all wonderful and great, and Alderwoman Conley, since you're calling me Joe, I guess I'll call you Erin. I think Daryl and Sharon Riffey were really involved in this.
That's who I called on the way down here.
Excuse me. You can respond after I'm done. So I think persons that have been involved in this, representing the Neighborhood Association, you know, it'd be the right courtesy to allow them to have a voice in this, or at least let us know what they're thinking. So I'm just explaining my no vote. I think our neighborhood associations are extraordinarily important, and I think when they've been following something like this, it's important to hear them on the night of passage, and we're not going to hear from them on the night of passage.
Yes, we are, actually.
Alderman Redpath.
Are they texting you?
Then Alderwoman DeSenzo, and then Alderwoman Conley.
So I just want to finish in conclusion. If now they're going to respond, I think that's great, and I think that's what the purpose of public bodies are all about, to hear from everyone that has a stake in the issue. And if we're going to hear someone that has a stake that's representative in the issue, that's all I'm looking for.
If I may, Mayor.
And it'll be greatly appreciated.
Mayor, if I may.
Alderman Redpath.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. I was trying to say that my phone call on the way down to this meeting was directly to the Riffys, explained the highlights of the proposal I have promised to offer, drop off, because I don't have email. In fact, Daryl, Sharon, I know they said they were watching. I told them I'd wave at them, okay? So, and I did agree that I would drop off a printed copy of the agreement for them at their house. So they're pleased to see this not -- I mean, they sounded pleased to see that this isn't going to go forward, and I'd like to point out that as the Alderwoman for this neighborhood, I speak for the residents, too. These are my constituents, and I have their best interest at heart, and that's exactly what we're doing with this. So I'd like to call the question and take the vote, please.
Wait, wait.
Alderwoman DeSenzo.
As a member of the Historic Westside Neighborhood Association, I will tell you that I'm in favor of this. And also, Daryl and Sharon Riffey just sent me a text, and they said they think this will be fine. This will be okay with them.
Me as well. They just texted me as well.
Yes.
They texted me a name suggestion, so.
That's all we're looking for. That's good.
Okay, wonderful. Can we -- I've called the question. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I already have a second.
All in favor, the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open, or should be.
By the way, my question was to call the question.
I figured that, but I thought I'd cut you out first.
The docket passes 10 voting yes and none voting no.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, at Alderman Conley's suggestion, we are taking names for the new development. Apparently, there's some feeling in the neighborhood that Bally Vaughan is sort of overused. So if you have any name suggestions, let us know.
And I will say, I did reach out to our librarians, because I think if you want to go for historical context and factual information, that's your source. So we will get something to you, I promise.
Very good.
Philginsy Plaza would be good.
Langfelder Manor.
Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-031 for the property located at 850 South Fourth Street. Petitioner is Springfield Rentals LLC. Present zoning classification is R5B, general residence district, section 155.021. Requested zoning relief, a variance of 155.056, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow a four-unit residential dwelling on a lot containing 6,384 square feet of lot area instead of the 10,000 square feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. Any discussion? I don't -- we do have someone signed up to speak. I don't know if he wishes to. Seth Morrison.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys considering the petition. I'm essentially doing an adaptive reuse of a duplex and putting two more units in the basement. I'm going to add two egress windows for fire safety and livability, one in the living room and then one, of course, in the bedroom for safety. So it's going to provide more affordable housing downtown, which I think is a hot point.
This is a different one. This is not that one.
850 South Fourth.
This is 850 South Fourth.
850 South Fourth.
I just got a hint of me, too.
This is Mather's Road.
No. What he read was 850 South Fourth.
Yeah, I read.
Yeah.
You're speaking to 850 South Fourth, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're on.
Hold that thought for me. It's the same.
It's not on our agenda.
Continue.
Well, yeah, I'm just trying to provide more affordable housing to the downtown area is essentially, and I'm not going to be charging crazy rents or anything like that, and everything is going to be safe and up to code per the Springfield Building Code. So I'm going to have all the inspectors and fire safety inspectors and everybody through, and they're going to be really nice units.
Great.
We appreciate you, Seth. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
There's a kind of a state of confusion, because it's not listed on the agenda, and it's not showing up yet on our screens, so.
I've got Mather's Road.
That's what I got.
That's what I was.
Well, this is 2021-031. Mather's Road is 2021-032.
We go from 27 to 32.
What was the other one?
We don't have those.
They don't have it on our agenda.
Agenda.
Corporate council, do you want to clarify?
It was on last week.
Here.
So who gave us that?
I'm sorry, just the mayor to ask, just from a technical point of view.
I do notice from the council agenda that the 021-031 is actually not listed on the agenda. So what we should probably do is basically hold that over, not take action since it's not published on the agenda, and hold that for the next meeting.
Is that going to hold you up?
It's my understanding that it was posted outside the clerk's office. So does that qualify?
Well, it's not on the council agenda for action tonight.
Okay.
So I would be concerned about a potential question if there would be a challenge of Compliance with Open Meetings Act, because in order to take formal action, it should be listed on the agenda or have appeared on a previous agenda and postponed to a date certain. So that would be the normal process. I did not -- it is on the zoning materials that were passed out, but it is not listed on the zoning agenda.
Correct.
For action this evening.
Correct. Sorry, Seth. Alderman Donlin.
That's okay.
Just a point of clarification. Is it, Corporate Council, is it your recommendation that we wait to the next council meeting in two weeks or have a special meeting next week, since we'll be here anyway for committee? What do you prefer?
I believe that the proper thing to do would be to postpone it till the next meeting. If there is a consensus, you know, this evening, that there's no particular objection, I just wouldn't -- we need to have a vote on the item when it's been listed on the agenda. And the problem we have right now is, you certainly could discuss it. I do not think you can take proper action on it because it is not listed on the agenda for action for a vote tonight.
So could we --
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, to clarify, could we list this as a special meeting next Tuesday at the committee of the hall?
It is. I will have to look at that, because I don't know what we published for. The zoning, Alderman Donlin would be very familiar with this process, we publish for certain dates. So I would just need to make certain that the original date, if this is one that had been previously postponed, if the date that was published in a newspaper, it cannot -- we cannot take action prior to that date. So I would be able to check on that and let you know tomorrow if it's possible to hold a special meeting.
Okay, sure. It's not going to hold me up either way. It's not like I'm starting construction tomorrow or anything.
So we will contact you. We'll have someone contact you.
Right.
Tomorrow and let you know if we'll have a special meeting next Tuesday, or if it'll be the following city council meeting, which would be the first Tuesday of August.
Okay, no problem.
First Wednesday of August, next --
Yeah, first Wednesday. Next Tuesday is -- or first Tuesday of August is National Night Out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Man, I was confused there.
Do you have to make any other motions on that or no?
We'll publish it. We'll make sure it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Great.
If we can do it sooner, we'll check the publication, and we can let everybody know tomorrow.
Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-032 for the property located at 3006 Mather's Road. Petitioner Inspired Properties LLC. Present zoning classification agricultural zoning district Sangamon County with relief granted by docket 2005-021 upon annexation to the city of Springfield. A reclassification of B1, S2, S1, and Office District. Requested zoning relief, a CPU pursuant to section 155.031C13, conditional permitted uses in the S2 Community Shopping and Office District, cemeteries and mausoleums, and section 155.180, cemeteries and/or mausoleums. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion. We accept the recommended approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes 10 voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-034 for the property located at 37 Weenold Lane. Petitioners Raymond and Mona Hickman. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence district, section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of section 3, setbacks of appendix A of the Lakeland Use Plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the expansion of the structure to be a setback of eight feet, measured from the building overhang at the northwest corner and eight feet five inches measured from the building overhang at the northeast corner. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the motion as submitted.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation, approval of the petition as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The docket number passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-035 for the property located at 3220 South Cokey Mill. Petitioners Ryan Tunken as contractor purchaser, present zoning classification B2, general business service district, section 155.034. Requested zoning relief, reclassification of I1 Light Industrial, section 155.040. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial as submitted, but recommend a use variance for a microbrewery production and packaging facility. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we follow the -- we approve the staff recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and with the use variance, is that -- I think that's what we're looking for.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation to allow the use variance as recommended by that body. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket passes 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-036 for the property located at 501, 515, 519, and 535, West Elliott Avenue, and 1113 and 1115, North Bond Street. Petitioner is Adiego of Springfield LLC. Present zoning classification is R2, single-family and duplex residence district, section 155.017. Requested zoning relief for reclassification to S1, Neighborhood Shopping and Office District, section 155.030, to use the property as a conservatory of music and dance designed to provide instruction, practice, rehearsal, storage, and office space for the Illinois Symphony Orchestra, Illinois Symphony Youth Orchestra, Springfield Ballet Company, and Springfield Youth Ballet Company, and the Springfield Youth Performance Group. Along with other musical and dance groups, if it is determined reclassification of S1 is inappropriate, petitioner requests consideration to allow a use variance of such other zoning relief as appropriate be granted to allow the property to be used as a conservatory for the instruction, practice, rehearsal of music and dance. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial as submitted, but a use variance for a conservatory for the instruction, practice, and rehearsal of music and dance be permitted. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is concur with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendations and add to the use variance of theatrical studio. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petition as submitted.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the petition as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket passes nine voting yes, none voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-037 for the property located at 2835 Stanton Street. Petitioners B Neighbors, Affordable Housing for Veterans, Inc. Present zoning classification PUD, Lake Victoria Planned Unit Development Residential World. Requested zoning relief in R3B, general residence district, section 155.018, and a variation of section 155.056, minimum required lot area per dwelling unit to allow 18 family -- single-family dwelling units on a lot containing 61,942 square feet of lot area instead of the 108,000 square feet required by code, and section 155.061, basic yard requirements to reduce the rear yard setback requirement from 20 feet to 15 feet. Petitioner desires to develop a residential complex containing 18 individual dwelling units of small homes, each consisting of approximately 546 square feet, which will provide clean, safe, permanent, and supportive housing for veterans. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is approval. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is accept. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendations. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to hold this in committee right now. There is some conversations that need to be had. I did speak with Mr. Harvey on this topic, and as we've heard here today, neighborhood associations and the people directly living around facilities is all important, and those are conversations that I require for things like this. We have some other topics that'll come down that the community needs to be involved in, and so I look forward to having those conversations and seeing if we can come up with a good situation for the community that is, you know, around it.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second to hold in committee. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Docket passes and be set back for consideration. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2021-038 for the property located at 45 Weenold Lane. Petitioners Terrence and Terry Moody. Present zoning classification is R1, single-family residence, district section 155.016. Requested zoning relief, a variance of appendix A, section 3 setbacks for the land use plan for Lake Springfield and its marginal properties to allow the installation of an in-ground pool that will be 45 feet from the lake shoreline at its closest point, and the concrete pool deck will be 41 feet at the closest point to the shoreline instead of 75 feet required. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is denial. Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation is grant the variance as requested in the petition. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendation for approval of the variance as requested by the petitioner. And second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfielder, and thank you for waiting a moment for me. I appreciate it. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund in the month of June, we had a beginning balance of $38,043,112. We took in total receipts of $21,648,412. We had total disbursements in the month of June of $21,020,672, which gave the corporate fund an ending balance in the month of June of $38,670,852. This concludes my report, Mayor Langfielder.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the financial report?
Moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial, oh, I already did that. The chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the July 6, 2021 regular city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place, incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, or, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
Moved.
Wait, we were going to pull one out.
Pull one off.
Okay.
Yeah.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Do you know what it was pertaining to?
21-299. Yes, we'd like to remove 2021-299 for the debate agenda, please.
Been moved in second to pull 2021-299 related to the lobbying activities, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd just like to have a brief discussion regarding 2021-285, which is 5.5 million for vehicles. And is Director McCarty here? If he's not here, then I'll just place on the, okay. I just want to make a suggestion on this.
Sure, let me read it so everybody understands what we're discussing. 2021-285 in ordinance accepting proposal. Number CS22-08 with JP Morgan Chase Bank for municipal lease purchase financing for vehicles and equipment in the principal amount not to exceed $5,515,000 for the office of OBM.
So, Director, I'm all in favor of this ordinance, by the way. It's, the money's all coming out of Fund 94. Fund 94 is the cap, is the equipment budget. And every year, by code, we put 1% of our corporate funds in the equipment budget to spend for purposes like this. So my suggestion and recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is that under the American Rescue Plan, they've got a complicated way to allow spending on purposes where the revenue isn't at the projected 4% rate of growth.
Correct.
So I'm just making a recommendation that if our corporate fund from the usual revenue sources does not grow at 4%, then we could possibly put in more than 1%, or take, get more than 1% into the equipment fund by pulling money from the American Rescue Fund monies to make up the shortfall of that 4%. I know people out there don't know what I'm talking about, right? I think, Director, you do, and maybe Mayor, you do. So I'm just saying that there may be some additional ways to supplement our Fund 94.
Oh, no, I understand.
That, you are 100% correct.
Go ahead, Director, if you want to explain that.
100% correct, Alderman.
I was referring to the general public out there, not the Aldermen.
You're 100% correct. Actually, we've already done those calculations.
Outstanding.
And Fund 94 is one of the funds that we have set up for that. So the calculation's already done.
Outstanding. How much do you think we'll pull in in addition to the 1% that we normally put in the equipment fund?
Oh, you know what? I was looking at this morning, but I don't remember that particular fund. There's five funds, four or five funds we identified, that was one of them.
Okay.
Fund 95, Fund 94, MVP, the SCVB Fund 21, and of course, corporate. All of the calculations have been done for all of them.
Thanks for your efforts on that.
You're welcome.
We have the discussion on the consent agenda. So all those in favor, we are pulling out 2021-299 for passage of the consent agenda under the, that particular one. Vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open for the consent agenda.
Waiting for the consent agenda.
And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number 2021-211, 2021-239, 2021-254, 2021-255, and 2021-289 remain tabled or in committee. All the women dissent.
Yes, can we remove 2021-211? Because I believe we have another person nominated to fill that spot. So just withdraw that one.
So there's a motion to withdraw 2021-211?
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is 2021-272, in ordinance approving, denying the partial plat of vacation of Lot 18 of Old Bradfordton Place, third edition for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-272 on final passage.
Make that motion, Mayor, for approval.
Second.
Been moved for approval, and second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is number 2021-274, in ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Springfield, Illinois, and Kenneth R. Boyle for the property located at 797 West Estill Drive. Chair will entertain a motion to place recessed regular meeting of the city council to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the city council regarding this annexation agreement? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-274 on final passage.
Moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, or the annexation agreement passes, 11 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-275, in ordinance annexing certain described real properties located at 797 West Estill Drive. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-275 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-291, in ordinance approving the appointment of Beverly Christian to the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning and Zoning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-291 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion?
Is Ms. Christian here?
I don't know if she's here or not. I don't see her. She currently serves on the commission, if you want to come forward.
Oh, sure, sorry. No, she's not here. I apologize. I did not ask her to be here. She was here for a prior meeting. She's serving in another commission as well.
So she was here at the committee as a whole? Didn't understand that she should have been at this one as well.
So that's my fault, I misunderstood.
So she's serving on two committees? This is for the regional planning?
Right.
Got it.
Right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2021-298, in ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $300,000 to provide, to assist in a small business recovery loan program to be administered by Justine Peterson Housing and Reinvestment Corporation for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-298 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And I understand we have representatives from Justine Peterson in the audience tonight. I just have a couple of questions if we, if we could. Thank you.
Yep. If you'd like to come forward, please. If you'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Sure, my name is Robert Boyle, and the CEO of Justine Peterson Housing and Reinvestment Corporation, 1023 North Grant, St. Louis, Missouri, 63106.
Thank you very much, sir. And I appreciate you taking the time to come tonight.
Happy to do it.
I'm sure, I know you've been told that there were some questions at the committee at the hall around this, this proposal. I understand there's an agreement in place with the Black Chamber of Commerce to provide additional supports for outreach.
That's correct, yes.
And that, that has been signed, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I would just like a little more information about these loans. Obviously, I have businesses in my ward that I'm concerned about.
Of course.
The, the documents that we received said that there is a 3% interest rate that will be charged. Is that the flat rate? It's not 3% over prime, or?
No, that's a.
I mean, if I'm, I'm an owner, I'm taking, I'm taking out one of these loans, I'm going to be paying just 3%?
Yes, that would be 3% fixed for a specific period, up to seven years, depending on the, on the loan, yes.
Okay. And then are there closing costs or other associated fees?
Yeah, would be closing costs of 2% of the loan. When you say closing costs, that's a 2% fee, which we typically add to, to the loan.
Sure. And then are there other associated fees with that?
No, there aren't. Well, a fee's perhaps directly related to, to buttoning up collateral, for example, but minor fees.
Is there, do you have a set amount of collateral that you, you require?
Well, typically, for loans over $10,000, we will ask for collateral. And as I mentioned to you, I'm happy to talk further with you about, with any of the Aldermen, in fact, about specifics related to the, the loans.
Okay. And then, just, in terms of technical assistance and support that you'll be providing, can you kind of go over your plan for that so that, you know, these business owners are pretty heavily tag, I mean, they're, they're busy. They've got a lot on their plate.
Yes.
And they've been, they've been pivoting and pivoting for a year.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm hoping, can you just kind of describe the supports you're going to have in place for them?
Sure. And I want to be very clear about the requirements from, for this loan product is that the business owner will agree to some technical assistance. Technical assistance is an interesting topic. We, we don't just go through the motion of technical assistance. What we do is we are very specific with the prospective borrower, the business owner at the time when we first meet. I want to be clear about the first meeting really has a lot to do with the story of the, of the business, and also an understanding of what resources the business perhaps is lacking. For example, oftentimes, we will discover a small business owner who may not have, for example, bookkeeping acumen. And the way that we approach that as a technical assistance opportunity is to perhaps put X dollars into the loan, which would pay for a bookkeeper, or increase the aptitude for an accountant. So we are very interested in technical assistance, which is related to the loan.
So you'd say you kind of take a look at the existing business model and provide support and direction on, on gaps you might identify for them?
Yeah. In fact, the, the monies that we borrow from the SBA with full recourse require that technical assistance, so we are held to a relatively high standard when it comes to making small business loans.
And then, just in terms of, like, completing the forms, what, what do you provide in, in that area?
Like, in terms of applications?
Yeah.
Alderman? Yeah, I mean, it's a very straightforward application process. And we would meet physically with the person. There's, you know, some online activity, but our model for 24 years has been relationship lending, one-on-one. So we're very, very much in a relationship model with, with the borrower.
And you'll be doing outreach to the businesses in the community?
Yes.
What kind of efforts is that going to entail?
Well, as I mentioned to you earlier, I would really encourage each of the Aldermen to consider having a, a meeting for the businesses in each of the wards. I mean, that's really what we're, what we're hoping to do.
And you would, you would provide someone from your organization to come?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
And talk about this? Okay.
And there will be somebody in, in city hall who would be an FTE, a full-time employee.
Okay. And I know, I know Dominic is here too, so his, his organization is going to be working with you to provide that outreach?
Yes.
And just to make sure people know about this program, its availability?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, sir. You know, I'm very happy about this program, and thank you for, Alderman Conley, Alderwoman Conley, for those questions. I think this is a very good partnership. I'm glad we finally got it sunk in, and I really think it's going to be a benefit for the city, so I'm encouraged to support this. Mr. Mayor, if I can, be added as a cosponsor to this with you.
Alderman Redpatt.
Yeah, could you explain the eligibility of who's eligible for these loans? I think Corporation Council had told me about that earlier today.
Yeah, it's throughout the city, and if you want to talk about the businesses that generally qualify, as far as, it's my understanding they're typically not bank-eligible, or it might be a tough to provide that type of financing.
Yeah, Alderman, yeah. I mean, any, any business which can't get a loan from a bank is, as far as we're concerned, eligible for, for the, for the loans. Of course, if a business can, is bank-eligible, and sometimes businesses come to us not knowing that they're bankable, we of course would refer the business to a bank. But otherwise, any, any businesses.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? The one thing that was mentioned previously is those that are approved before September, I guess, or before the end of September on the SBA, if you could explain that.
Sure. Just to be clear, we borrow money directly from the SBA with no guarantee. The SBA has engaged those of us who are microlending intermediaries to offer small business loans to businesses through a period of, where, where the SBA will, will pay for a number of months of payments. And through the end of September, the SBA has agreed to make the payments for the particular business. That's only a couple of months away, but if we can begin to close some loans here in Springfield, it could be advantageous to those businesses who could, would borrow money before the end of September. That's why we really want to giddy up on this in some ways.
So it's just the remaining months?
Yeah.
Not three months?[1754.21] Not three months?
Yeah. Now, the SBA may move that. The SBA may say, you know, we're going to expand that opportunity for businesses by the end of September, which is the end of the fiscal year for the government.
Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. So with that in mind, how soon can people start applying?
Tomorrow.
Okay.
Or depending on when the, when you agree.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 10 voting yes, none voting no.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2021-299, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $75,000 to provide funds for lobbying activities for the city of Springfield. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman DeSento.
Thank you. I have some concerns, as do some other alderpeople, about the fact that this is just spending authority. And when I wrote the ordinance and submitted it to Corporation Council, I had some stipulations in there, and those didn't make it onto this ordinance. The way I saw this hashing out was we would hire one lobbyist and that person, whoever that person was that was chosen or put in a bid, that would be approved by the council.
Right.
And then last week, some discussions were kind of, well, maybe we could hire this lobbyist for this and that lobbyist for that. And that's not really what a municipal lobbyist does. They lobby for the whole city and for all parts of the city. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here and that we're not, you know, doing $20,000 contracts for one lobbyist and, you know, another $20,000 contract for another lobbyist. So if I have to amend this to say that, then that's what I need to do.
Corporation Council?
Council Coordinator Griffin had actually asked about kind of the concept that was applied regarding advertising, for example, sponsorships.
Yes.
So I would recommend if the, and again, this is a policy decision. This mirrors what's in that particular section. We could add under Section 1, "Any contract for lobbying services entered into pursuant to this ordinance shall be subject to City Council approval."
Perfect.
So that would cover those that are lower or higher than the normal process, but it is consistent with the sponsorship language.
That works for me.
So if you would like, the proper process would be to motion to adopt the ordinance and a motion to amend.
Okay. Then I move to adopt the ordinance. Second?
As amended?
As amended.
Motion for the amendment first.
I'm sorry. Motion to adopt the ordinance, then a motion to please amend it with that language, and we'll incorporate that if you'd like.
Again, motion to adopt the ordinance.
Moving second to adopt the ordinance, a motion to amend.
Motion to amend the ordinance, second.
And the amendment is?
I will read again if you like.
Yes, please.
We would add to Section 1, "Any contract for lobbying services entered into pursuant to this ordinance shall be subject to City Council approval." That tracks similar language that exists relating to sponsorships.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Moving second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could, we frequently have this situation where we amend something at City Council. Can I just ask, as a matter of course, that we get a copy of the amended ordinance emailed to us so that we, just so I can track it? I like to make sure that I have copies of everything.
Yep. Yeah, we'll let that out.
Yeah, the clerk actually, when they're doing the amendments occur, I think the clerk actually circulates all of the past ordinances.
Yes.
So that would include that.
I just want to make sure that we get a copy so that we see it with the amended language in it.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Amendment passes. Just a point of clarification. We have had many inquiries about this already, and so Deputy Mayor Kathleen Nowcor is coordinating the RFP process, and then that was our intent to, you know, select one, but it'd be RFP process, have to come before the council, I believe, for final approval, right, Corporation Council?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the ordinance as amended?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Proctor.
Just quickly, what's the timeline on that process? Are we going to be ready for veto session in October?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be, hopefully. All right.
It defeats the purpose otherwise.
Please, please, yeah.
Please.
Yeah, it'll probably be next month.
Very good.
Thank you. August.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request to Council Coordinator Tim Griffin. Will you get a copy of this ordinance from the clerk and distribute it to those that have an interest in this ordinance? Mr. Griffin? Are you there?
You take care of it.
Thank you.
Alderman, would you like to be added as a cosponsor?
Mr., no, no. But Mr. Griffin's microphone is missing, so.
I think I have it.
Whose microphone is?
Tim Griffin's, our council coordinator's microphone is missing. I don't know who did that to him, but it's missing.
Here, you can have mine.
Any other discussion? Alderman Connolly.
May I just ask that we, as a council, have a conversation soon before the RFP goes out so that we make sure that we're in agreement on issues that we need to make sure to get touched on with this lobbying effort?
I think the, yeah, we'll share the draft of the RFP. I think the challenge will be what we want the individual to lobby on. I think it should be like interest, so that's, we'll have to discuss that.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yes, we will.
Sometimes we're divided, not always, but sometimes. So we want to make sure that everybody's understanding of the direction that's given to, in the RFP and the lobbyists.
Exactly. Thank you, Mayor. It still has to come back for a vote, so.
Right.
Asking.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended, 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is knocking number 2021-309, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of proposal number 1220 from McQueen Equipment LLC for purchase of a new Pierce Enforcer 100-foot platform truck in amount not to exceed $1,213,168 for the Springfield Fire Department for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion placed Agenda number 2021-309 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? Alderman Redpath.
What's the revenue source we're going to pay for this?
194, I believe. I think it's in that.
This is included in that 5.5 million.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Director McCarty.
This is included in the 5.5 million equipment loan that was discussed earlier.
Okay.
This is one of those items.
The only reason we're doing it now before getting the loan finalized is to save money. Pierce is implementing a materials surcharge starting August 1st. So if we get the agreement signed by then, then we can avoid that surcharge and saves us tens of thousands of dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the platform, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the platform truck is what we used to call a ladder truck. Is that?
Yeah. Yeah, it's a ladder truck. There's an engine and a truck, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. The ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-311.
There's one more, 310.
Did I skip it?
Yep.
Sorry. Next item on the agenda is 2021-310, an ordinance authorizing the acceptance of proposal number 2011 from McQueen Equipment LLC for purchase of a new Pierce Enforcer engine in amount not to exceed $622,212 for the Springfield Fire Department for Emergency Passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2021-310 on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. Do we get the discount that was mentioned with the previous ordinance?
Yes, I believe so.
Was it like a $5,000?
Director McCarty's bobbling his head.
Nodding his, okay, perfect. Wonderful. I'm glad we're taking advantage of that.
Alderman Hanauer.
So what do we do with the trucks these are replacing? Are we going to sell them to another fire department and recoup them? I don't, I mean, there's might be.
They're going to the fire truck races.
Are they going to use a?
They wouldn't win. The one that it's replacing is a 2,000 truck, and actually, it just failed the ladder testing portion, so that's why we, one of the reasons why we needed to do a replacement on this. So this one, what we use the other one for that it's going to replace is basically a toolbox. We can't use the ladder, but we can still use it to haul equipment around in case that we have any other type of extrication or anything else a truck would go to.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, real quick, for each one of these vehicles, how long will it take to get them in?
The projects, once we get the orders actually placed, are probably going to be 11 to 13 months. So we have another purchase that we're going to actually have that's going to give us a spare truck for a little while, but that one is going to be with the agreement with Director McCarty that once we get the new truck in, that we will liquidate the other one, but.
What we do with them, I didn't.
Generally, we do try and sell them, but right now, we're in an unusual circumstance right now as well that I was informed today that we have no workable spares. So we have, in our spare fleet, all of those have issues as well. So as we funnel these trucks through the maintenance shop, sometimes, you know, we're down to zero spares. So if they're really good, the one that they're replacing, we put it in our reserve fleet, but a lot of times those reserves, they'll be in there for five to seven years, and by the time that we're done with them, they're not worth much. Sometimes we donate them, sometimes, you know, we scrap them. It's just all in what they're worth. We run the wheels off them. I mean, the stuff that we have in reserve is old.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the, did we already vote on this?
Yeah.
Nope. All in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-311, an ordinance accepting the lowest bid and authorizing the execution of contract number PW22-05-23 with Traffic Control Corporation for Video Image Vehicle Tracking and Detection Systems in an amount not to exceed $127,150 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-312, ordinance authorizing an agreement with Malat Morris Leonadi Parker LTD for design services for Municipal Center West, one-stop shop interior renovations for an amount not to exceed $34,765 for the Office of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-313, ordinance approving the reappointment of Randy Belleville to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion placed, motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-314, ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for TKE One Lounge LLC, doing business as TKE One Lounge, located at 1701 J. David Jones Parkway. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading Agenda number 2021-315, an ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by amending Section 36.58(c)(8) leaves of absence, sick leave. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Alderman Hanauer.
What's, Bill, I don't know who to talk to about this. Is this regarding, got some pretty heated phone calls from city employees? Is that going to fix that?
Yep. Corporation Council, you're our, you're our.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I just thank God because that, yeah, people weren't real happy.
So this will, I guess, correct it to comply with IMRF, or do you want to give a brief explanation?
Yes, just very briefly, the IMRF rules or regulations have some technical language that relate to the way the formula is to be applied for unused unpaid sick leave. This corrects the city count, the city code provision so that it complies with that section of the IMRF rules. It is consistent with what the city's done over the last, I think, 20 years or more. So we're just trying to fix what I very honestly think is kind of a technical glitch and to make sure that the code matches with IMRF requirements.
Alderman Hanauer.
And I guess the question is, is anybody that's retired from the time this went retroactive? Do we have anybody that's retired? So, because if we have, they need to be corrected.
We received it under this calculation that we're changing the code to, I believe.
No, there's nobody that was impacted. We'll double check, but there were a couple who were planning to retire in the near future.
Held off.
And we've, they've held off. It wasn't quite time for them anyway, and we did reach out to them and let them know that this was in process, so I think we're going to be okay. And if anybody was impacted, we'll fix it, but if anybody was impacted, it might be one person, and honestly, I don't think there were any. This is all very new. We just found out.
Just checking.
Yeah, we just found out.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business? Come before the city council. Alderman DeSento.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Three ongoing complaints. Speeding in the city has been out of control. I get complaints daily about it. Trash, trash not being picked up, trash being stacked up, you know, big, big shout-out to Darrell Harris and his whole team because they, you know, I had to send him a special thank-you note last Friday night for all the complaints I sent him last week. Overflowing trash, you know, our waste haulers are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, which is reporting these residents, putting the bill on their CWLP bill, and neighbors have to suffer because of, it's hot, and it's stinky, and it's disgusting. It brings rodents, it brings nastiness, and it's really not that hard. And why we can't figure this out as a city is beyond me. So Darrell, I apologize for all of those complaints that I've sent your way, as well as, you know, now this has taken off with all these abandoned houses. This was going to come up at one point or another, but I probably have 15 to 20 in my ward. I could name exactly where they are. And Alderman Gregory, I know you can too. So Darrell's been getting swamped with that as well, so I just want to thank him for his patience on that, as well as his staff. They've been extremely responsive, and I appreciate it.
Great. Alderman Connolly.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We'd asked, I know Alderman Donilon had asked a while ago, an update on the Ferguson Booth situation, and my understanding is they've completely run out of the timeframe. So is this an ordinance that we should look for to come back to us, or is that one, what's up with the project?
Yeah, I meant to call Tommy Lee today, but he has said he'd come back to the council, but it's my understanding he was hoping to have a closing date this month. So Corporations Council, I don't know if you've talked to them.
Just very briefly, but to, at this point, it's outside of the timeframe, therefore we require an amendment, therefore it will come back to the council. And we've been over that with Mr. Lee.
Okay, so we would expect to get something on, through the regular first reading committee?
Correct, right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because they have to update their scope of work and also their schedule because they're way off because of the problems with the financing.
Right. Do you have an idea of when we should expect to see that, or are we still kind of?
Hopefully next council meeting for first reading. But the reality is, I think the hiccup is with regards to paying the outstanding bills, things of that nature, that's where they've run into difficulty with the financing. And so it's my understanding that they're going to come with that part first or address that issue on the forefront.
Okay, thank you.
But we'll have them come regardless, we'll have them come to that first meeting in August. If that's all right. Any other discussion on that? Any other unfinished business?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Proctor.
I hate to hit this one again, but it has to do with the, what we talked about a couple weeks ago, I mean, it was last week, I lose track, homeless in downtown Springfield. I just got bad news that one of our more historic businesses, probably about 100 years, is probably going to close if we don't get this corrected. And it's just, it's disheartening to hear things like that from somebody who's invested their entire life in, you know, a business like that, and then to have that be torn away because of, we're balancing the rights of, well, basically who, they're out there begging for cigarettes, begging for money, begging for pot. It's not right. When does the balance of their right conflict with the balance of the rest of the community to operate a business successfully or not be harassed to go into a business in downtown? It's just getting to a point where I feel like maybe that they're most likely not homeless, but they're using it and they're abusing it to a point to where it's causing other hardships throughout the community. And we're not going to have a downtown left in five to 10 years if this continues. So I beg, I beg City Legal to please come up with some sort of policy that the police can use to solve this. And I keep hearing, last couple, you know, times was if there's a place for them to go, we have the legal right to tell them to relocate. You know, if this is regarding Tent City, or they're on the sidewalks, because I walked the City Council day and I passed three of them, they're lounging on the sidewalks. They're not supposed to do that. You know, they're supposed to be upright, moving around and everything. But the police officers that were there said they don't want to be hauled to the Supreme Court because of civil rights and stuff. So, but then I got the other business down there saying, see ya, I'm done. You know, so what do we do? What do we do?
I guess to give a little background with regards to that, you know, we did have a ordinance on the books you could not solicit downtown, things of that nature, and the federal government overturned that. And so we were slapped with a, I think, a legal lawsuit. Corporations Council can weigh in, but I think it cost us about $300,000. Within that, we did come up with the five-foot rule with regards to that. So if you're invading someone's personal space, that was passed by the council, and that's anywhere you live in the city. So if you're anywhere soliciting, you cannot invade someone's personal space. And again, it's if you're caught in the action. So, okay, let's say it is a poor person, what are you going to do? You know, you can't really levy a fine, and that's what that essentially is unless it is, reaches the point to legality, and Commander Dodd can come up and speak to the police efforts with regards to that. But that's the challenge we have with regards to that. So as far as day service centers, that's what we're trying to address, you know, 24/7, 365 days a year, what to do, you know, we have limited libraries, you know, it used to be they'd be over at the library, things of that nature. But Corporations Council can speak to the rights of any individual, regardless of your situation in public space.
Just very briefly, that's, there's really two issues there. One is the issue of soliciting or panhandling. The courts have been very crystal clear, you know, on the ability, ask for people to request or ask people for donations for personal use or otherwise. However, they have allowed restrictions to stand, in other words, not be invalidated, if it relates to aggressive panhandling. And that's the ordinance that the City Council has approved, and that's the direction that the police officers are allowed to take specific action. Now, as a purely practical matter, if the, if someone does not, is not willing to either, you know, sign a complaint or the officer doesn't see it, the most the officer can do is really caution that person. If it is not aggressive, they have a right to ask people for donations. It's that simple.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry. What about asking for donations of a highly regulated product? Because it's, that's why they're there, is to ask for, hopefully they might get a free sample for someone who just bought marijuana, or gummy balls, or whatever we call it. So there's got to be some sort of, and state statute says they're, they can't loiter in front of dispensary. But the unfortunate situation this is it's a sidewalk in front of the dispensary, not like over where Alderman Haner's, where they got a huge parking lot and they own the parking lot, and they're going to say, get off the parking lot. But in here, we got a sidewalk, and can they get a cafe permit and then take control of the cafe permit in front of the sidewalk, and so that they can create more boundaries?
Well, there's several practical issues there. One is, I will check the state, first off, loitering, the term loitering, the courts have invalidated that 20, 30 years ago. You know, you cannot, a person that doesn't have money is not considered a criminal. And so the issue with respect to soliciting, for example, for marijuana, I assume you're meaning cannabis?
Yeah, yeah.
That's an interesting question. They are allowed to certainly ask for money, ask for food, ask for clothes, you know, that, all those are certainly proper. I'm not sure if there would be a distinction for, quote, asking for cannabis. It is a legal product. It's a legal product. And so the, the city's hands are tied with respect, generally speaking, to the use of the public areas. On this separate note about camping, you know, not soliciting, but just simply mere presence, I think the courts are pretty clear that provided you allow, provide another location, you can ask persons to relocate to that location, but you cannot prohibit somebody from being in a public place because it is by definition public. It's by definition public. So the officers, you know, just as a practical matter, if they do issue a ticket, first off, if there would be something beyond just a ticket of aggressive panhandling, but maybe disorderly, the jail is not going to accept them. So they may write a disorderly, for example, if something happens beyond aggressive, but then they're not going to be locked up or anything, they're simply going to receive a disorderly, you know, notice to appear at some point, they're not going to be as if they're not there. If there's a ticket for aggressive panhandling, you get into the problem that they do not have money, then you end up with, yes, they may go to court for that ticket, however, you cannot put them in jail if they don't have money to pay the ticket.
I'm not saying that we should criminalize them, I'm just saying that we need to somehow balance the rights of business owners who are trying, and the, you know, the patrons that are going to these businesses not be molested.
We can revisit the directions with the officers because they certainly are allowed to direct a person, you know, for example, if they're within some of the distance locations, you know, that are allowed, they certainly are allowed to direct a person to leave or otherwise, you know, conduct themselves properly. But Springfield, like any city, like Chicago, like any city across the country, there are very real limits on what you can do to stop a person from asking for donations, whether it's money, food, clothes, or otherwise. Now, the camping's slightly different, because if we do offer an old location or another location, then we can ask them to move. And they cannot block a sidewalk. I think there's a very specific general order to the police department that explains exactly what they do, or what they, you know, what the officers can do.
But we know they can't obstruct entrances or exits, things of that nature.
That is correct. For example, of a business laying front where somebody can't go in and out, officers very proper to say, you have to leave, or, you know, you have to go to another location.
Yeah, Alderman Repath, then Alderman Descenzo, then Commander Dodd will speak.
So Corporations Council, can we designate no soliciting zones?
Well, if you recall, that's the very ordinance that was invalidated.
Okay.
Under that court proceeding, there was a designated area of downtown where soliciting, panhandling could not occur, and that's the very ordinance that the court said was unconstitutional.
And then also, there's, there are certain areas in Springfield that they're violating law by getting into the roadway and crossing the street to get to the middle medium. There have been accidents caused because the people are going to the middle medium on South Sixth Street was one of the areas. I know out north that on Dirksen Parkway, they're doing it, and they have to cross the roadway, which they're not supposed to be able to do, and Commander Dodd can explain that, because I believe that we can make, we can take some action on that, correct?
Just very briefly, there's a state law actually that addressed the issue of soliciting in the right of way. The Attorney General's Office, just in the last six months, has entered into a consent decree indicating that law is unconstitutional with the very attorneys that sued Springfield. So we are looking at some variation of that on the basis of public health and safety, but that's something we're going to have to take a close look at, and we've got a couple of drafts done. However, the AG's office on that state law basically said it's unenforceable.
Yeah, but when they're crossing the road and causing a public safety hazard to drivers and to themselves, there's got to be something that we can do on that.
The law was a Class A misdemeanor for soliciting from a roadway, which we used to enforce. No longer do that based on the guidelines from Corporations Council. The other side of it is walking in a public way, which is a normal citation, unrelated to the panhandling, but would still be.
It's correct. That is unrelated.
Yes.
Those are things that everybody is subject to, which is why you can still enforce.
I absolutely watched a car accident where the guy walked in front of the cars and people had to slam on their brakes, they ended up rear-ended, and there was a four-car pileup down on South Sixth Street. So those are bad situations, and you know it, Andy, because you guys deal with it every day, so.
Absolutely.
Alderman Descenzo.
As far as the loitering outside of any cannabis dispensary, there is, it's highly secure just to get in the door. I mean, you have to show them an ID. There is literally a bouncer at the door of every dispensary, not that I have visited all of them. But the ones I have visited have a bouncer at the door. So I'm not sure why they can't just ask the person to move along. They don't have to move along, of course, but they can ask, they can say, you know, move it along.
Mr. Mayor.
And we have, you know, we have looked at, and again, Mayor's request and the Chief's request, we are looking at whether or not you could potentially adopt an ordinance that actually would provide for a violation for a person making the donation. However, that's very, very complex because you could be back in the same scenario of interfering with that person's right to make it. So we are looking at that issue and how public health or safety might be a factor in relation to the roadway. For example, when a, if a car would stop to make the donation, if you see somebody with a sign, you could probably ticket the car for causing a potential unsafe condition.
It's not too expensive. No one's given that word.
This is really, this is absolutely affecting our economy. This is, I can tell you that there's conferences that will not come here. We've seen major businesses in Springfield move out west because of the problems we have downtown with the panhandling and the homeless. We need to figure out, we need to find a solution. We've got to figure this out.
Thanks, Alderman, because the very, no, I'm next.
Alderman Proctor, then Alderman Haner.
The very question you brought up, I asked them to, their private security is afraid to enforce because the police aren't enforcing it. So they're like, if the police aren't going to enforce it, then how can we do it?
But it's no different than a bouncer at a bar.
They're afraid to get sued. They're afraid to get, you know, they're.
Here hasn't been kicked out of a bar.
Yeah, so, well, I'm just giving you the answer that they gave me, but it's just, they won't do it.
They can ask them to move along, they can't put their hands on them unless they're defending themselves. They be scouting, smoking cigarettes.
No one's asking anyone to defend themselves. Everyone's just saying.
And ironically, ironically, the private party does not have the same restrictions that government has because the very, the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution says, you shall make no law that abridges the freedom of speech or association. Very First Amendment. By enforcing a law, you, that's the argument that came with trying to make a zone downtown where people were not allowed to solicit. And the court found that that violated the First Amendment because we made a law. Private actors are not constrained by that. So a private party has more ability on their private property, for example, to say, you have to get out. They don't have to have a law because they have the right to take action within their, within their property.
So can we will the public sidewalks downtown to the businesses that are there?
That's what I was getting ready to say.
Make it all private property?
Alderman Haner.
Exactly what some cities have done, they've leased the sidewalks in the public areas to a private entity.
You give the sidewalks to the businesses, and that's their land, then they could, they could put no trespassing. But here's a situ, here's the bottom line, and, you know, we spend a lot of money trying to help get downtown revitalized, but the fact of the matter is, people are not going to go where they're going to get hassled. That's the, we could spend $50 million downtown, but if people are going to get hassled, they're not going to go there. I mean, on these businesses, we should give them the sidewalks. And then, then if they're on, it's trespass. And I mean, I don't know, but if we don't do something, we can, we might as well stop putting money there. And then when they go out west or wherever, we're going to, we're going to be in the same situation. And I, you know, I feel for the people, but, you know, Alderman's right, we have, you know, what about the rights of the people not to be hassled, you know? You go in, people come in on Sixth Street, people are holding signs, you know, and.
I've been hassled at Target, so, I mean, you know, it can be anywhere. If we're talking about downtown revitalizing downtown.
Right, it could go anywhere. But my point is, is that we, if we don't do something, and, you know, Mr. Zirkel, I know our hands are tied, you know, and we're a little, I think we're a little nervous because we've already got sued once, but, but if we give, if we give the sidewalks to the, to the businesses, that's their private property, they don't want them on there, they can, you know, they can.
Yeah, that's one of the areas of consideration, so we'll check to see if others have been successful in that. Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess this just kind of brings to mind the parklet concept that we just, you know, we have a program to help fund that. Is this, could we do parklets on our sidewalks that would, I mean, is that something that we can allow? It certainly would help also beautify downtown, which would be, you know, another added bonus.
Yeah, the main thing is, with sidewalks, of course, is a pedestrian pathway, especially with wheelchairs and, you know, so it can get a little bit dicey if you start giving sidewalk space away, and then you get a, you know, a business owner that doesn't like a certain person and doesn't want them to pass through or downtown, that could be, that will, that will impact the economy.
No.
If you're being an unfriendly city. So I think really what it comes down to, and let's make the clear distinction, there's people that are asking for funds, things of that nature, and they're not necessarily homeless, so I think the outreach is really the key. But if it, what we'll look at with the dispensary, our officers hire them, and then they can enforce or do whatever as a hireback, and have them down there during regular operation hours. You know, so let them be part of the solution with regards to that. But we'll have to, you know, that's a struggle that we'll have to contend with and find a solution. But it is very frustrating when you have a law that's intact, in place, and then you have the federal government overturn it, and then you can be sued. I mean, that's just ludicrous. And it wasn't the people that provided the lawsuit that received the money, it was the attorneys in Chicago. I think the plaintiffs got what?
$10,000.
$20,000 or less, and then $280,000 went to the attorneys. So that's very frustrating. But it's just not Springfield, this is all over the country, this is happening.
Let's ban attorneys.
So Commander Dodd, anything else you'd like to share with the group?
We know it's a problem around downtown. Every day, my officers are doing special details for the homeless downtown. We really go up to Fifth and Sixth and Carpenter due to all the problems they had up around those hotels. We're doing what we can, we're out there. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of recourse that we can do at this point, but we're aware of the problem, we're doing what we can, so.
And I know we've talked about this, and we'll be talking about it, but the American Rescue Plan dollars and funds that are coming from the federal government, we need to really do what we can to address the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? And we do have the Levitt Concert Series as a reminder continues Thursday at 6:00 on the Y Block. And then, thanks to Memorial Health Services for sponsoring the Corn Fairy Golf Championship that is very successful, and I appreciate them, and LRS, and all the sponsors that really put Springfield on the map, and I'm sure it's going to continue to grow with regards to that. Is there any new business come before the council? Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Alderman Gregory.
Um, so we've been talking about this house, thank you, Alderman Descenzo. So, and I've been racking my brain because there's a lot of pressure on all of us to really do something with these vacant and abandoned houses. I know we spoke to it a little bit, and of course, we don't, we're not looking to tear down all, but we're looking to try to identify and prioritize those. So, you know, I was just trying to find ways to help. I know, you know, we got them all over the city. Of course, I feel there's a lot more of mine, but, so what I had done, I went and I had met a guy, I was handing some food out, and he happens to be, works for the union, Mr. Brett Skaggs, so we met. And I was really just trying to get a couple of houses donated, torn down to them, but he has agreed, and I'm very, very gracious for him, that they will use their trainees along with a minority training program in my ward as well, to tear down all the houses that we deem necessary for free for us. So I was very, very happy to work that out with them. So then I. So, then, I, I promised them that, that I would get back to them, and, and I would get with Public Works and City Legal to see how we can prioritize the fire damage house. I know we, we already have that. So, therefore, our Public Works crew can, can go to other wards and help, and, and, you know, because I, I know we got a lot, and I'm going to be hopping on it and crying about it, I don't want to tie up our, our city workers. So, I was trying to help, and, you know, I thought it was only going to do two of them, but, you know, they're, they're excited, and, you know, it's a good thing for young men in our community as well to help, you know, get some of them down. So, of course, everybody's been asking, well, what's your plan when you tear down all these houses? We've been working on that, we've been working with different community housing organizations to replace those. I've talked to several private developers that are interested in doing that. Honestly, I'm really, really impressed with what Ennis Park has done with the land bank and sort of doing that. That's why I was fighting hard with Alderman Proctor to get, Alderman Proctor to get that done. So, I, I want to work with them, work with some of our neighborhood associations in Ward Two, and see if they can mentor us on how to, on how to attack these vacant properties, put them in the land bank, and, and work with others, and really have a, a growing community. So, with that said, I, you know, Nate, the great, we, we gotta, we gotta set up a meeting here and get, get together.
And Alderman Gregory, just so you know, they've done that in the past, they, that's.
I was really surprised that they'll do a lot, because we've got such a lot, so.
Yeah, we've got conversations with them. Right now, obviously, everybody's busy with the construction season, but we'll look at doing that, obviously, during the, during the, during the winter months.
They focus on that.
That will allow, in order to accomplish that.
Right, but, but what I want, what I want to do, though, you know, whether it's this week, next week, I want to see if we can, I know we got a lot of lists and stuff, so I want to go through that, you know, along with, with the mayor, and really identify corporate counsel, corporation counsel, which ones we have in possession, which ones are in dire need to be torn down, and, and really come up with a game plan with them. I want to, I want to help lead this effort, you know, so we, so we can do it right, so we can, you know, really address some of these things, because I don't, I don't want to, you know, a, a house that just burned down three weeks ago get tore down, and then, you know, a house that five years ago burned down is not, you know, we, that'll just make people mad. A lot of times, the news and stuff sway us and swing us, you know, with priorities, and that's, you know, what it is, but I, I want to stay focused on the people and, and get it done, so I look forward to those conversations, my friend. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Alderman Williams. So, I've been, Capitol Township, it, it matches Springfield, or is the same as Springfield, corporate council?
Capitol Township is located, its boundaries are entirely within the city of Springfield corporate limits.
Okay, so, so I was told that, when I also was told that, that they have, you know, three million plus that they are sitting on. Now, I know they have their own Board of Trustees and their own, probably protocols are, are the way they do things, but have we ever asked them to, to help out with some of these city residential type problems? And I'm thinking in the area of trees, in particular, branches, you know, that kind of thing, where these citizens, you know, the storm comes on, breaks a branch, and it's hanging or what, they can't afford the thousands of dollars, and mostly elderly, disabled, but they're residents. And I think they're a part of this tax base, that, you know, this, this three million dollars that's sitting over there, I know we probably legally can't make them do anything, but have we ever asked of, of their assistance on any of those type of problems or issues that we deal with, with our residents and our wards?
Yeah, their assistance is, I'm not sure if it's limited, Corporation Council can answer this, or maybe their board, but we can definitely ask for that. Usually, it's the low heat program.
Yep.
You know, low income heating and air, as well as job training. They've assisted, I know Bone Training Institute on South Grand, they participate in that. And then rental assistance, they participated in that as well. So, those are the three tranches, or three areas that they've assisted. But again, with the homeless initiative, I know that has come up in conversation before, but with regards to limbs pickup of that nature, I don't think we've asked them for that, I'm not sure if they would be able to do that.
Just very briefly, I think the mayor's outlined, and, and others here are familiar with that, that the ability for the township, they, they raise their money through property tax, so it's all paid within Springfield. They are, however, by their statute, limited to certain activities, and public aid type activities, public assistance, the areas that the mayor's talked about, the aldermen have talked about. So, I'm not sure that tree limbs or those kind of issues could be addressed, but we could certainly look at the statute and see. But they do have specific items that they're allowed to expend their money on, such as the job training and so on.
I appreciate that, because I would like to explore that, you know, explore it out, because there's, there's just tons of issues that we deal up here around the shoe, that it's always, it's always funding and money, and then we have an entity, you know, that models our wards, but yet they sit on three million dollars. I just, I just, you know, I just want to, then I thought, well, maybe we never asked, so, I mean, and the residents made me aware of the utility assistance and the rental assistance and things like that, but I was thinking more something new that they could possibly do, you know, so I just wanted to inquire about it, and I, and I, I have a meeting set up with Brian McFadden and a few others, and I'm going to bring it up at that meeting as well. Because if there's something they can do to help us with these numerous issues that residents have, that a lot of our residents can't afford, maybe this would be another way they can add a program or whatever, you know?
Yeah, especially on private property, but again, if you're on the, what they'll do is prioritize, so, of course, priority that we've heard tonight, that continues to come up, is with the housing aspect.
Sure.
And so, especially towards affordable housing initiatives, things of that nature would be a priority for sure. Alderman Redpath?
Yeah, one more thing.
Oh, sorry.
So, with that, you know, there's times I'm dealing with high grass, or weeds, or whatever, and they say, well, that's, you know, Duro and them would say to me, well, that's not city, though, that's county, or that's township, or, so again, at least do their own, you know, if it's township, at least do that much, you know, because a lot of times, our department will go ahead and cut it anyway, just to shut me up, I think. But if we could, again, tap into that resource, so I just want to explore that, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, the Capitol Township, that is our responsibility on public right of way, that's the cities or vacant properties, things of that nature, so even though they're in Capitol Township, that would be our responsibility. But again, if it's a private entity, you know, they're responsible for their own properties, but of course, some individuals can't afford to pay. I've, we've gotten calls from all over the city with regards to trees.
Trees, yeah.
You know, that's like six thousand dollars, once a tree crashes down on your property, not everybody has the capacity to remove that, so that's where we could use some assistance without a doubt.
There's other townships, too, like Woodside Township and Springfield Township, that he may be talking about in those areas, who are responsible for those, those properties as well.
Okay.
Outside of the Capitol Township area.
So, so Nate, do they have a, do, does Capitol Township have a road fund?
They don't have a road fund.
Okay.
It's one of the peculiarities of Capitol Township, because Springfield actually does all roads.
Right.
And that's different than other townships, where other townships might have a responsibility for roads, but Capitol Township, the way the law is written, does not.
Okay, thank you. Nate, one more thing, if I could, Mayor?
Yeah.
We've had several storms this summer, and there's a lot of branches. We, last year, I think, or the year before, we did a extra pickup in the middle of summer. Is that possible, that we could do that?
We're in the process still of picking up some of the branches, however, in, in another week and a half, we will be starting our second round of the pickups, where we'll start up in the north, the northwest area, and then work our way around the city counterclockwise. But we are still picking up storm damage at this time. If you have some locations, feel free to reach out to us.
If you're gonna, if you're starting your second round, that's, that's, that'll handle it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm not correct, we went from two rounds last year to three rounds this year, is that right?
Four rounds this year.
We're now four rounds.
Correct, we're doing it quarterly, so every May, August, November, and February, we will be doing branch pickup.
So, we doubled our rounds, is that correct?
Correct.
We went from two rounds to four rounds.
Correct, and we'll still pick up Christmas trees in January.
Thank you. Alderman Hanner?
Yeah, and we, I, I think, I like that program, we just have to do a better job of letting everybody know when it's going to be, because I've got people that have put branches out, you know, a month ago, and they've, they've, they've sat there, and it's, you know, there's been some people that put it out the, two days after you guys came around, so we're, we're going to have that, but I don't know whether we have to do a, you know, where we give them a letter just saying, hey, you know, this is when we do it, I don't know how, the best way, but next year, I think we got to try to figure out a way to, to really get that out better.
Yeah, I think it takes a little bit of time, but, but I agree with you, and we have put on some door hangers to let them know they're in violation, and then eventually we will have to start citing people, eventually. Thank you.
Alderman Conley?
Thank you. And just because it probably needs to be said again, people can still take their free branches down to Evans, and the smaller branches that can be broken up and fit inside a bag or a marked garbage can will be picked up with the bi-weekly, or the every other week.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for mentioning that.
I will mention it every time, because, like everyone else, I get complaints about branches. It's better than it's been, but I still have, yeah, it's, it's, until we get to, like, an every other week for branch collection, I think.
That's not happening.
That'll be difficult.
I was in Korea.
But you're right, we try to provide the higher, highest level of service, and then, of course, we have storm right, right in between, so that's, that's what we're battling now.
Yeah.
Any other new business? We do have, people signed up to speak, Reginald Witherspoon? Witherspoon?
Reggie.
Where have you been, Reg?
Good morning, everybody. Good evening. My name is Reginald Witherspoon, I'm trying to make it short and sweet. And yes, I stay in Ward Five, not giving out the address, but I stay in Ward Five. Everybody talking about Corona nineteen and virus nineteen, but if you go on Facebook, I put it on there. We talk about numbers, numbers are the same in counties, what, forty-nine to fifty-one percent, right? That people is vaccinated, and you got a lot of people's unvaccinated. People's is keeping it from the news, that from the, the virus is the ones that people getting targeted with. No, it's not true. The ones that getting sick right now with the Delta virus is the ones that's getting the vaccines. Because I was one of them. I took Johnson and Johnson, and when I went into and told my doctor, I said, no, I don't need this, just have faith in God, and have faith in me, I will not catch it. It was an article down on Facebook, I just put on there Monday, a lady that got paralyzed from taking the Johnson and Johnson. Her feet got cold, needles, warm, she didn't, she didn't act on, she got paralyzed. You got other people that taking the, the P, I don't know how to pronounce the name, or the M, it's still getting sick. Look at Boston, I put it on Facebook, seventy-nine people died to taking that vaccine. It's three hundred and three in the hospital that took vaccine that caught Delta, and it's over three thousand peoples at home right now, because it is Delta virus. If we going to sit up there and do it right, let's do it right the way, right. Stop going out there and telling people to take this virus shot, if you know they're going to kill people. Because there's a lot of people's out there is dying. Liberty's dying for taking this vaccine. Now, I understand we got peoples out there that got low mucous system, and low immune system, yes, let them take it, but the ones that got strong immune system, that can't actually fight it, don't make them take that shot, please don't. Because what we doing legally, eh, we should be charged, just like going out here killing people, both y'all doing it illegally. I'm not against the, the council, I'm not against the mayor, but I am against the San Juan County Health Department, because they got the numbers, but they not releasing the numbers the right way. Because mostly, everybody in the hospital right now is dealing with the Delta virus. We don't have no, no many peoples out there that's unvaccinated is in the hospital right now, but the ones that's out there getting that shot is in up in the hospital. Let's do something about it, because right now, the how I feel right now, the city's out there telling everybody to take this vaccine, y'all actually killing people and getting away with it. That's how I feel.
That's, that's completely false information.
Actually, we can't tolerate that kind of misinformation.
Yeah, that's, no, first of all, it's a voluntary shot, no one's forcing anyone to take, to get the vaccine, that is completely false. Second, the, the pandemic, the, it's a pandemic of the unvaccinated right now. Those are the people that are getting sick, not people that have been, and there are people that are fully vaccinated that are getting the Delta variant, that is true. But to come up here and say that.
It's actually.
That doesn't mean it's true. That doesn't mean it's true.
It's actually the reverse, you know, if you're, people that are getting sick or dying, it's, the majority is from not getting vaccinated, so that's why we highly recommend it, I'll use myself an example, our families had different reactions to the shot, we've had all of them, actually, but I didn't get the flu shot till this year, and the main reason for it, and I'm not a big vaccination person, but you just didn't know how it's going to interact with the coronavirus. So, if you want to double down on the coronavirus, I mean, demon and Christmas, it's not worth messing with. I mean, so I went in and got the flu shot, I got the Pfizer shot, and, you know, I didn't have any reactions at all. Actually, I had more reaction with the shingle shot.
Oh, yeah.
But with regards to that, I think this isn't, hasn't gone away, and so, the one aspect that we will see is, in the next fall and winter, you know, nobody heard about the flu a hundred years ago, and, you know, the numbers through the years, how many is the flu killed, so, you know, the coronavirus is going to take that same path. So, don't think that we're out of the woods. What we want to be out of the woods on, though, is staying open. We want to work our way through the pandemic. The best way to assure that is to continue to wash your hands, keep good hygiene, if you're uncomfortable, wear the mask, but yeah, those, you should get vaccinated, because, you know, it's highly recommended with regards to that, and the numbers are proving that out with regards to, but it's everybody's independent choice, we're not forcing that on individuals, it's their own independent choice, but you need to be respectful and understanding of an individual's rights, just like we had the discussion earlier tonight about freedom of speech and everything else, with the, your own personal health, it's your own independent right of what you want to do. But that's why I'm not on social media with regards to that, but really, you should consult with your doctor, your physician. If you have medical ailments, you should consult with your physician and, or someone, an expert, and then have them work with you to make that informed decision.
Alderman Conley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Reggie, I'm sorry you had a bad reaction, that does happen to some people, but I am going to go out and say, yes, absolutely, everyone should be getting this shot. I'm putting my grandma hat on, there are children who are too young to get this shot, and they can still get sick. It is, it's a civic duty to get this shot, to do your part to, to keep this virus from spreading amongst us. No one wants to go back to what 2020 was. It was devastating emotionally, financially, we lost a lot of time with our friends and our families, and we lost it because this virus was tearing through our country. I, Alderman Hanner was just talking about a friend of his who, who just got sick and was out of the hospital, my brother was in the hospital. This, the virus is much more deadly than, than the vaccine, and the vaccine has been shown to be safe, it has been shown to be effective, and the more people who get it, the fewer variants will be able to spread through this community. And, and Reggie, you and I, we talk, and, and, and I, I care about you, and I, I want you to be well, but I'm going to a hundred and ten percent disagree with you, and, well, I can't, we were not forcing anyone to get that shot, but absolutely, you should. It, it's the, I'm a hugger, and I finally feel safe, I've got, I've had my, my Moderna shots, and when I meet people who have too, it's, it's good to be able to give a hug, and, and do back, go back to where we've been, so. Again, I'm going to just say.
Any other discussion on that?
Facebook should never be your source of science or factual information.
Yeah, just, just real quick, I, and, you know, it, it is people's personal choice. I had a friend of mine that, that he elected not to get the shot, and he got the Delta variant, and he told me, and he ended up in the hospital, and he was, I was worried about it, I thought, I didn't know if I'd get to see him again. He got out of it, thank God, and he's still struggling, I mean, it's been over a month, you know, six weeks, and he said. And he said, he said, if I would have known that it was going to be this bad, I'd have got the shot. What people are saying is, yeah, you can still get the Delta variant after you have the shot. But what I've heard from physicians is they're not seeing those people in the hospitals.
Yep.
Now, all I can say to people is, it's your choice. But when you, when you get this thing, it's, it doesn't care. It goes after you. And it, it, you know, and this guy was a healthy person, very healthy. And he got it terribly. I, I, I just thank God that he's pulling out of it. And I just say, if you, you know, really think about this, because we're going to have other variants. You know that's happening. And we're going to have it. But people need to, you know, I really would hope that any, any people that I know would definitely get that. Because it doesn't have politics. This shot, this, this disease is not political.
Finally.
It will, it will, it will get you whether you're Republican, Democrat, socialist, it don't matter.
I think it skips the communist.
Any other discussion on this topic? Next is Michael Moore.
Evening. My name is Michael Moore. I live at 122 East Adams Street. And here we go again. Another proposal for a homeless shelter on 11th Street. We, the Pioneer Park homeowners, neighborhood association, is speaking out against this proposal. Our residents have experienced an influx of homeless population urinating and making obscene gestures in front of women and neighboring children. Even members of the city council have expressed concerns with behavior of this population. We respect and asking that the site rests on another location, but not the east side. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for coming up. I have been in conversation with the Pioneer Park Association as well as the Madison Park, individuals from Madison Park Place. And, you know, I've received all types of different opinions on this topic. I've had conversations with the mayor and I'm always an honest person in, in, in my conversations. And this is a very difficult situation that we're in. For the immediate future, I do believe that we need to do something to get them out of the elements. Right now, they are, you know, that we own that property. And, you know, we can't move them from that property. In fact, I was just reading a tweet from the CDC that actually discouraged from breaking up tent cities with, especially in this situation for various reasons. And so I stepped back at that and, you know, and really looked at it. It is a public health factor right now for all of us. So, you know, what I think is, you know, is going to have to happen is we do have winter coming up. We're about to get very, very hot right now. And I think we do got to get them inside. And we do have to assess their needs and get them moving on into their own housing situations. I've never been in disagreement of supportive living or individuals having their own homes. I've never been in disagreement for that. What I definitely think is a major issue that we're having a hard time wrapping our heads around is individuals who do not fit all of this pretty criteria that everybody has right now. Whatever, whatever type of services that we have. Many of these individuals that are, you know, at tent cities, so to speak, right now have been in many of our social services programs. They've been kicked out for not following rules. They left by choice, for whatever reason. I was just reading the article on Rockford. We always quote that. And it spoke to some of the ways that they coaxed some individuals into trying a hotel for a while or apartment, et cetera. I spoke to the mayor in Lincoln this morning about this plan. And I'm not fully in agreement with it being there for two years. But I definitely think we need some more time to really find a permanent solution. That I agree. I have made it clear to the mayor that, that, you know, we definitely need to do something right now. But when it's time to shut these two streets down and turn down half of this warehouse, I believe, you know, for more than just homelessness, but this whole building needs to be tore down as well. I have concerns when we shut down both the streets as far as individuals being there. I don't know the timeframe of that. But the foreseeable future right now, I don't, we don't have another building to put them in right now. But we are working on that. We are trying to get that. My primary goal right now is to try to provide a place where we can assess these individuals and really help them get better in life and to the next step in their life, whether that's addressing their mental illness issue, whether that's addressing their alcoholism or whatever it is that's hindering them. We want, we need to address those, those things. And we need a place to do that short-term wise. And I know the continuum of care is working on a long-term plan and a long-term solution. And I agree with you that we do need to move forward on this, on this, you know, topic on 11th Street and really find a permanent situation for them. So I'm working for the association, for the neighborhood, and for the people of Ward 2 to really come up with a good plan. And, you know, you know, we have to remember that these, these individuals are citizens too, in their opinion. It's part of the article I was reading is saying that their opinion and their thoughts should be considered as well. And many of those differ. So we are trying to work through that. So for the immediate future, I definitely think that we definitely need to get it open. We definitely need to get some people assessed. We definitely need to work with Fifth Street Renaissance to try to provide supportive housing. And, you know, for those who are just ready to go off and live, help them out and get them there. You know, I told the mayor, you know, if we do go through with this, you know, for a year, I'm not a fan of the two years, but for a year, maybe even pilot, I know we like that word. But I do think that we have to have some metrics in place. And we have to have everyone who is, I heard something about, let the professionals handle. I agree with that. Well, the professionals are drug counselors, their alcohol counselors, their doctors, their psychiatrists. Those are the professionals and people who have experience with homeless. All need to get in the same room. And we need to come up with a plan on how we move individuals from one point in their life to another. So I'm in total agreement with you and association that. But I will ask for a little bit of time. Because I, you know, we just really don't have another building to really do this out of.
Next on the, that signed up was Erica Smith?
Speaking of an expert, yes. Hi, my name is Erica Smith. And I'm the executive director of Helping Hands of Springfield. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I think I'm the last person, so I'm separating you from home and I'll make it quick. I am a member of the Continuum of Care, the Heartland Continuum of Care Board. I do not come here tonight to speak for that entity. I speak for Helping Hands, my organization. We are in our 31st year of providing emergency shelter, housing, and support services for people who are at risk of or experiencing homelessness. I also have heard on Channel 20 some about the proposed plan. I cannot really comment on that either because I haven't seen a copy of it. The one thing that I would question, though, is the, what seems like a pretty excessive amount of money to be allocated to a shelter when our local data makes it clear that our shortage is, as you pointed out, Alderman Gregory, housing. Meaning supportive housing and rapid rehousing with the appropriate and comprehensive support services to keep people housed. So what I really want to do tonight is offer what I think that you're asking for, which is some sort of common goal we can all get around and a starting point and a base that we know what we're trying to work toward. It feels like a lot of what we do is very knee-jerk and reactive. We work with people who are in crisis. Everyone who comes to Helping Hands is in crisis. We can't be in crisis too. We have to be wise and compassionate. We have to be smart and we have to be kind. And so I'm going to share the goal Helping Hands is working from. I would hope, and I know others must join, because we cannot and we will not do this alone. I think Springfield and Sangamon County should set the goal right now that we will end homelessness in Sangamon County in five years. We can do this. Other communities have done this. And there's no reason we can't as well. When I say the word "end," though, we have to be very clear what that means. It means making homelessness rare, brief, and non-recurring for all of our citizens. It's what you call functional zero. But I think especially being the land of Lincoln and being concerned about all our community members, we would say we will stop at nothing short of ending homelessness. And when you look at some of the media and social media, and when you hear some of the conversations, right now, this feels kind of impossible. But I always go back to St. Francis of Assisi. When something feels impossible, you start with what's necessary, you do what's possible, and suddenly you are doing the impossible. And there are three things, I don't have a lot of time, two minutes left, but there is a structure we can use. There is a plan that we can start from right now that will give us the tools. This isn't a mystery to us. There are three necessary things that we have to do. And I'm coming to talk to you as council members because we need your leadership in this community. The first thing is that we have to develop our system. And the evidence-based model that we are actually using some is a crisis response system. And these are our coordinated teams working together on all parts of homeless to housed. And that's the thing. We have to focus on housing. All parts of the system are important, but the ultimate goal and the direction is toward housing. Our guiding principles are we prevent homelessness whenever we can. We get people the right resources as fast as we possibly can. And our goal is to help them revise, resolve their health and housing crisis through housing with appropriate supports. The second necessary thing we must do is build our team. And that's a job of our continuum of care. We already have a lot of great team members in our community. And I wish we would focus on some of our wins. Because we've had a lot of them recently, although you wouldn't know it by watching the news. All housing programs in our continuum during COVID-19 maintained or grew. And we all had, from our grantors, permission to slink back and to close some if we felt we needed to. And none of us did. Helping Hands increased our shelter beds. We improved our permanent supportive housing program to go to 100%. And we also started rapid rehousing. And since April 2020, we have housed 52 people in our community who were previously homeless. I tell you this because it's possible because it's already happening. You do have to address unsheltered homelessness. But it's not going to be the same model we've always used. And two years ago, I was up here standing, telling you that that's not sustainable, effective, or efficient. And we know that. The representative who was just up here talks about that. We see the effects of it downtown. But this is not how it has to be. Other communities have adopted other models that don't just try to take one agency that's already focusing on housing and put this on them on a seasonal or temporary standpoint. That doesn't work. Your agencies who are housing people should be encouraged to continue housing people, not be pulled away to provide reactive services. St. Paul did it with one model. Cincinnati and many other communities have done it with another model. So my message to you is, there are options. We just can't start in October if we want to have one by November. And it's not too late now. And we actually have done this in the past. What we need from you as leaders is we need for you to develop a coalition with inclusive representation to help us find what that looks like and where it should be. So finally, I know I am out of time, but I have three things I'm going to ask of you tonight as our leaders. First, why don't we set our goal to end homelessness in five years today? Why don't we establish that goal, understanding that we all are responsible toward working toward it? Secondly, organize an inclusive coalition of community members to determine what we want overflow shelter to look like. So overflow shelter operates within the crisis response system, is appropriately structured, and is effective and sustainable for as long as we need it. And finally, most importantly, I ask you to allocate resources when they become available strategically based on our community's data and recommendations from our continuum of care. Josh Sabo is our director for the continuum. I can't speak highly enough of him. He's a great leader. He's a very competent professional. And he represents us well. Our continuum should provide the data. We should provide the recommendations. And we honestly also should be held accountable for what we do and the outcomes we provide. So I would, in conclusion, say, thank you. We are depending on all of you to lead us. Solving and resolving homelessness in our community for the good of our most vulnerable citizens is achievable. And it's attainable. And it's possible if we choose to do so. So thank you, and I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Alderman Gregory and then Alderman Donnelly?
That timer doesn't mean you get to leave yet.
So...
No, watch it come back.
I don't think anyone's ever told me to come back after I stopped talking. Most of the time, they're like, keep moving.
So Ms. Erica, thank you. I asked Mr. Mayor to speak, and he has granted me that. So I, you know, I am very passionate about this situation. And I think all of you know that. That's probably why I haven't talked to you since, till tonight. This, this, this situation is in Ward 2. We just heard our constituents again come have those problems. So I, you know, I get very frustrated when I don't speak to anybody. But I know we have spoken to all the other council members. That's sort of why I get frustrated. But I have always agreed with supportive housing. I think you guys have a great plan and you guys do a great job. However, we have been set back because I, I don't know. So is the Center for Healthy Housing no longer a thing? Is that two years ago plan? Is that, is it? So I guess what I'm asking, and because I don't want to be here all night. If we change the plan and say, you know, let's go with, because Josh sent me his plan. If we go with that, there's about 50 people over in Tent City. Are we going to be able to house them by the time November comes under your plan?
No. I, this is not going to be fast. The unsheltered, and this is just me speaking, okay? So unsheltered homelessness was a crisis two years ago, and it's a fiasco now, as we all know. There are a lot of contributing reasons for that. There are decisions that our, our community over the last 10 to 15 years didn't make. And one is not investing in housing and in supportive housing. We also have a situation, honestly, where we've created a scenario where people can get on Facebook, ask for whatever they want, and it's delivered to them. I'm not saying people are making good decisions. But I'm saying if we know they're in crisis, why are we, why are we enabling some of the decisions that they're making that are destructive for them and other people? The situation, you cannot just move people out, especially if they don't have a place to go. We absolutely need the overflow shelter. That's, but we also need to ensure, if you look at our data, that our current shelter beds are being filled. And we need to encourage people to do that and not discourage them away from shelter right now.
I agree. So my, my second question would just be simply, so I'm in total agreement, right? We all need to work together, especially for this immediate winter, and try to, I said this last year. I think, I think our Salvation Army does a great job. I definitely think they need some help. I've already filled in some calls from individuals that are looking forward to trying to help out and work in whatever emergency shelter we have this year. But I really want us to, I'm all down to end homeless in five years. And whatever we need to do to do that, I'm going to support that. And that should be our goal to end this and get it to a point where we don't, where we're helping people advance. But I'm just curious in making sure that we have a, a, a good group of people to really plan out this, this emergency shelter. We don't want to have a, it wasn't a failure last year, but we want to keep moving. We, you know, when we come back next year, hopefully, we don't even need an emergency shelter, you know, to that size or anything like that. That's what I'm really hoping that we can do. That's what I'm really hoping that we can do. You know, I looked at the continuous plan, and it was, you know, for 115 rapid rehousing things for $750,000, I would push to the days end to get that. If we can say that we're not going to have to look at this at Salvation Army, and not because it bothers me, or because they're bad people or criminals or nothing, but because it pulls on everybody's heart when they pass by there. That's why they give it. It's hard to do. It's hard to pass these people up who's asking for money. I be thinking about, man, Sean, you ain't two checks away from being out there with them. So I always try to give someone and be capacious when we're talking about this. I don't want nobody taking me to jail for sitting, you know, on the corner asking for a couple of dollars. But I get it. We can't baby them. We can't enable them, and then things like nature, but we definitely got to get them to a point where we can leave, get them out of the elements, assess them, and try to move them on to the next point. And I think with this move, that's what we're trying to do. I don't agree with the timeline for it, but I do think we need a little bit of time to try to get them in one place, and we'll all work together to.
We definitely do need overflow shelter. I guess what I'm trying to say is that the model that we've used is not the only model out there. There are other options, and that's something that we really need community input on, because as we've seen over the last several years, agencies trying to do that themselves are never successful. So that's really all I'm, all I'm saying there. We do need the overflow shelter. It needs to be coordinated with our continuum. It does need to be supported, but it can't be a model where weekly we hear agencies aren't stepping up. The agencies are stepping up. We're housing people. So we need to be focused on housing people, and we also need to look at this as a piece of this system.
Well, I look forward to talking to you more.
Thank you.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Fugenzi, Williams, and Conley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Ms. Smith, thank you for coming. I appreciate your willingness to step up and talk about this issue time and time again and provide leadership on it. Just to kind of get to the heart of what you had suggested, who needs to be, let's say, who needs to be at this meeting? Is it the members of the Continuum for Care, city staff? Like, help outline for us today what we can do in a kind of conversation that can occur prior to next week when we're being asked to vote on something that is related, and had a chance to dive into it yet, but give us some guidance on what you think would be advisable for us to do in the next seven days.
So, so this is what I think, based on what I've seen. I think we have potentially several options. But I, I think it looks like that the main sticking point has always been for anything even perceived as shelter, whether it's actually shelter or not, is always the location. So instead of waiting until October and then worrying about location, and then everyone kind of is back against the wall, I, I would say you need to get community leadership together that is inclusive and represents the entire community. Now, if you look at what Springfield did about 30 years ago, that group that they chose to tap to do that, that Mayor Langfelder 30 years ago, was the faith community. Helping Hands was created out of that. It was the Christian, the Jewish, and the Muslim community that came together. Now, the situation then was different than it is now, but what I'm suggesting is you need that kind of inclusiveness. What can't happen is it becomes the city against the agencies, and it's constant, you know, well, this person didn't do this. We need the representation of local government. We need the representation of service providers. I would say particularly the continuum. We need the representation of potential funders, but we need an inclusive voice as well that is going to be able to offer some objective guidance, and that we can say, help us find this solution.
So I appreciate that. I appreciate that response. And really, I just want to take it to the next step. What can we do? I mean, what, I guess I'll just be very blunt about it. We have an ordinance up next week, and of course, we're all being asked to vote for it. Do we take a timeout and try to coordinate this meeting of these individuals and try to get a handle on where we're actually heading?
I would first, if I were you, and I am not, so you can, I know at any time you can turn off the microphone and make me go home. I first would look at our community data. What does our data tell us we need to do? And what does the data tell us where we should drive our resources, A? So what is the utilization of shelter beds in Springfield right now? What did past utilization look like? What do past costs of various shelter models look like as well? That's information that you need if you're going to make a decision right now about what to do. You know you need overflow shelter. The question is, where is it going to be? And how do you appropriately structure it so it doesn't balloon out of control and actually take away from the potential for people to go to other shelters that are funded to be a step, and a more intensive step than what overflow shelter is? So I would ask for that information. I would also ask specifically how any shelter you're going to fund works with other current shelters. So you want to make sure you structure it correctly within the current system. I think that's information you need to. So if you're asking me, I would say that step one is to gather the information you need to know what your options are and to make a decision. And then I think you, I haven't, I haven't seen a plan, so I can't argue against something I haven't seen, but those are the questions that I would be asking. What does our data say? What do best practices say? And realistically, what's the best use of our resources based on those two things?
And I don't mean to put anybody in a spot, but Mayor or Mon, whoever is in charge of community relations, whoever's in charge of these types of issues on behalf of the municipality proper, can we get the answers to those questions? Like, that's, those are great, those are great questions, and that would be extremely hopeful to have. And, you know, I'd like to get a better feel for, I don't know, the ordinance that was put on first reading tonight, I think it's for 1.2 million. It looks like it's for a 24-hour shelter for, Mayor, help me out, what period of time?
For two years, where the number came from. One is Salvation Army. They run the safety net program in different communities as part of continuums. But if you just run the rough numbers of what the overflow cost, $200,000 last year for basically four months, you multiply that out, and that's where you get the 1.2 million. But I think that's a spend up to amount. I think, appreciate Erica coming tonight. I think that's very important, you know, because there's a lot of different entities that can come together. I did talk to, you know, some health provider leaders and moving forward in that direction, because what everybody wants is to put people in a different position, a better position with housing, but you have to have that supportive service. I mean, that's a key. We can't put people in housing and then just set them up to fail. And so really, when we took a tour of the Salvation Army, one, Alderman Conley asked, how large is that space? That space is extremely large. That's not going to be the permanent solution or permanent answer for a low-barrier place. So that's what we'll have to address, but that will be the place for this year, it should be. And the reason for that is the pandemic. I mean, when you, Erica went through that with the pandemic, when you have infections, you need space. You know, how can you quarantine people, things of that nature? That allowed us that space. So unless something proves more beneficial, that will be the location for this upcoming year. But how does that, that's where we're trying to fund, is the programming part of it. And then how do you progress to the model that would be successful within the continuum of care? With regards to the housing initiative, that's a key component too. You know, there's, you can go anywhere from what Fifth Street Renaissance has done with regards to successfully doing 20-unit complexes. And then with the supportive services, or what Helping Hands has done successfully, I believe is with single-family units and moving in that direction. But when we took the tour, Amy Boils from Mercy Communities actually said the challenge they have is the staffing and the program staffing of funding the programming part. That's the piece that's really a struggle. I think the structural part will be easy, because whenever you get community development block grant funds, or, you know, even American Rescue Plan dollars, or the CARES Act funds, brick and mortar is where we can spend it. The programming part is the challenge, and how do you make sure that the agencies have the supportive services that they need? So that's, in answer to your question, can we get that for you? Yes, we'll put it together as much as possible. I know Captain Eddy, we were looking at who to meet with, you know, Josh Sabo and all the continuum of care partners that would be interested in, you know, helping with that piece and moving forward with the supportive services. That will be the first piece, but that's just, they're the providers, and you have the funding agencies like the city, the county, capital township, and then you have the healthcare piece. So it's pretty exciting. One is Ed Curtis. He's a leader on the healthcare side of things. What's pretty exciting, if you haven't read in the SJR, is the new director, CEO of HSHS. And so a forward-thinking individual. So really, it will take all of us to really make a successful strategy moving forward with regards to that. But we'll pull as much of that together as possible for.
And I don't mean to overburden anybody, but what I guess, just want to make sure that we, even if it's a, I don't want to jump a week too early, if we can take a timeout and make sure, like you're suggesting, Mayor, that we have these individuals in a meeting from the continuum and in the community, and just to make sure we're, try to get, at least try to get everybody on the same page or get that feedback, because it is, and we all know this, we all agree in the horseshoe, it's extremely important. And it sounds like the, there's a more of a long-term component of this, and of course, a SOS component, overflow shelter component. And the good thing is, we're at least talking about it in July and not October, so.
And I have to say, and I say this honestly, that is very hopeful for me. This is the first year I've been on this job where we were having this discussion really this early. And it's not early, honestly, but it's a whole lot better than October, and I do appreciate that greatly.
Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, I just, my thought on, on the whole thing and how we, with the city, it should be involved in this is, we should just, we should have a seat at the table, but we should let the, let the experts make the decisions, and then we, not only the city, but the county, the township, and whatever, we say, what do you need from us? We don't dictate to you. We don't, we're not running the show, but we allow you guys, the experts, and I consider you and Josh the experts. You guys have been in it, you know, and thank, thank you for what you do. But I, I just see that's, sometimes, you know, the best thing government could do is step back and let the experts take over. And this, we've, we've gone year and year and year, and we've, we've dealt with it, and it's, it's a difficult subject. It's, this is, this is hard. And every year, we've, we've had, we, you know, I could just imagine, you know, what you go through, Mayor, and, you know, all of a sudden, you realize it's October, and we got to do something in a hurry. But in this case, I think we let the experts come up with the plan, tell us what we can do, what the county can do, what everybody can do to help out, and then, and then go forward with it. And we might have to, have to do something with the overflow this year, and then next, but, but we need to start, start working that plan. And again, we should not dictate to you guys what we want done. You guys should be dictating to us what we need to do to help you. And, and I mean, I'm, I'm on board with that. I think we've tried everything, this last minute, you know, and this year's been great because it isn't last minute, but I really think that, that that's the best approach to go, because you guys, you guys all talk together, we tell us what we can do. I just think that's the best model we should take.
Alderman Fugenzi, and then, I forgot my order, Williamson, then Conley. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you let Helen Hour in early.
Yeah. Alderman Fugenzi.
The thing that I hear continually at this, I've been here six years now, and it says, we always talk about shelters and housing and doing this, and the one thing we don't talk about is the mental health issues. That's the underlying problem. We've got to solve the mental health issues. And until we do that, all of a sudden, the stuff just icing on the cake. It just doesn't, doesn't do anything. It's just frosting.
So I, I agree. Not everyone, and I know you're not saying this either, who experiences homelessness has a mental health issue, but everyone who experiences homelessness has a traumatic experience by virtue of homelessness, and most people do have a history of trauma as well. So they may also have a mental or behavioral health condition or a physical health condition co-occurring with substance use. What, what we, we have to do is, we can't see these as segmented, siloed things to take care of in an order. It has to be holistic and taken care of together. So we work very closely, and we have, we're grateful for all of our healthcare partners, and we do partner very closely with Memorial Behavioral Health, with SIU, the, what was a Trauma, the Survivor Recovery Center, with St. John's, and with Central Counties Health Centers as well. What the mayor was referring to is that build-your-team part. The team is your integrated health and housing core team that, when you house people, and I also would ask all of you, if you want to ask, when an opportunity to house people in your ward comes up, please don't vote against it because of bias or misinformation. And I ask all of you that, because all of you should at some point have that question come up. But I understand the viewpoint of you cannot just move people in and leave them and hope everything will be okay. So that build-your-team second necessary ask, is that coordinated and innovative health and housing team that works and is dedicated to giving people the services they need to make housing stability as likely as possible? And we find, and other communities find, and we do too, because we've had quite a bit of success. When we do that well, we do stabilize people who previously were in crisis, and they often are very good neighbors who go on to be successful.
Alderman Williams.
You know, I like that part you just said about, when, when opportunity comes up, do not vote no, because I think Sean is taking a risk, because I get the same calls and the same questions and the same arguments. So it looks like it's going to be on 11th Street again, but it's going to be in a different location. It's not going to be what they defeated now, they're just a few blocks down, but 11th Street still, yet. And I'm coming, I guess, from the, as a neighborhood association president. Now, you know, I know how my neighborhood association is. It's full of Ms. Rain, oh, she's not here, Ms. Ms. Rainey. I mean, it's just a bunch of people who really are passionate about what they do. And what I would say to Sean is, okay, you're going to push this, maybe we'll go with this. It may be there for a year, two years, I don't know. One thing I do know is two underpasses is going to be on either side, to the, to the south and to the north of it, and the only entrance into it is 11th Street. They did tell us that at that tour. So, because of rail, you know, all the stuff that rail is going to do. So you're going to take the risk. I'm going to support you. Okay, we're probably going to get through this first year. John's one year, you're one, two years. But in the end, the elephant is still in the room. The neighborhood associations, Madison, no matter which one, they all are saying it's 11th Street still, so eventually that thing gets tore down, maybe? Maybe that, we're still going to be here, and I want this council to remember one thing. Earlier, when we started this meeting, we said, has the neighborhood association signed off on it? And we was only talking about apartment complex with normal people, I guess. So here we are, with neighborhood associations went in, and all we, and a lot of times, we act like that's not important. Just remember this, that they need to sign off. They need to sign off, just like they did what we talked about earlier, because I think he's at risk when he does this, but he knows and has the passion to know that we got to get, get them out the heat, get them through winter, whatever, you know, and we get there. But we're all going to be faced, or some councils are going to be faced with this decision of what we're going to do, where they are going to end up being housed. And that's, that's all I want to say, Mayor.
Very good. Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you're keeping track. I'm not sure I was. I took some notes, but first, Erica, I'd, I'd like to thank you. You're one of the first people to come before this council to speak about people who are experiencing homelessness with hope and with optimism that we, as a community, can resolve this. And that, that lightens my heart. It really does, because, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to repeat Alderman Hanauer, I will just say, ditto. We appreciate when the experts come in and when, when someone who has dealt intimately with this, with this population and, and the circumstances around that, as you have, when you come in and stand before us and say, this is possible, that lightens my heart. I'm also going to ditto, you let us know what we need to do. I do remember, Mayor, I read John Fallon's report, and, and part of, part of what was in there was, don't over-expand emergency shelter. You know, and I- You know, and I, I've talked to Josh Sabo about this, and one of the things he said, you know, he, he pointed out, if our funded social service agencies are not filling beds because people are going to another funded source, we're actually gonna lose capacity within our existing social service structure. And we definitely don't want something that, realistically, even, even if we do it for, for two years, is only funded for two years. We don't want the, the short-term solution to undermine the fabric of, of our long-term existing structures. And so, you know, you, you've mentioned, I, I think we need to keep that very forefront in, in how we consider this, this, you know, this emergency proposal. It needs to be, and you, you've, you've said this a couple of times, I'm gonna just repeat it. It needs to be right-sized. It needs to be developed in conjunction with our existing structures so that we're all supporting each other. I mean, I, I'll tell you, if you want something that's gonna get, and I'm gonna speak for my ward, get my ward out supportive, and, and please get this addressed, it is finding a safe and supported solution for the people who are, are experiencing homelessness. And I know, because we've seen you before, that you have constantly in your mind all of the other supports that go along with that. You know, I've won a lot of new terms every time you come here, and, and everything, you know, the, all, reading all this information, the trauma-informed care, so that we're looking at people who are, they're in crisis, but that crisis can be short. You know, we have the professional capacity with our hospital system, with our social service system, and yes, with our city, with, with these funds that are coming to us. We have the capacity, and I think it's almost unprecedented, with all of the, the level of expertise and the funding, to really make a meaningful change. So, I, I do, I do ask, I mean, we'll, we'll be talking about the ordinance next week, but I think we need to make sure that we're, we, we make it right-sized, we don't undermine our existing system. And then, the other, the other note I made, 'cause you kind of alluded to this, faith community. I mean, if we have one, one, one component of our entire community that is deeply vested in this, I think that would be excellent. If we could pull members of our faith community together, Mayor, and, and have our coalition, the faith community, city representative, county representatives at the table to say, what is the best location for, for the short-term overflow shelter, for a longer-term overflow shelter? Roy, absolutely. The neighborhood associations need to be involved. I, I think one thing we need to make sure of, though, that this conversation is led in the vein that Erica started, the way you started your presentation tonight, that this is a place of compassion, and it's a place where we need to be, where we're doing solutions. And you and I've talked, actually, the building that I was thinking of has been sold, so it's not available for shelter right now, but absolutely. I, I, Ward Eight is a welcoming community, and I agree. We shouldn't be put. Alderman Gregory? I, I know the feelings around 11th Street. Those were made very clear to us, and I think we need to be respectful, that this community is, we are one city, and this one city needs a solution. And so, we need to make sure that that is a solution that builds us up and moves us forward, and I'm just gonna say, again, I, I appreciate that you come in here with, with the hope of a solution and just with, with hope and optimism. I, I think that I would like to see this solved. I would like to, I, I'm, right now, I mean, I, hand to heart, five years, I will commit to doing whatever this council needs to do, and I'm planning on running for reelection, so I will hope to be here to see this concluded, and that in five years, we are, we are at functionally zero homelessness in our community. And then, watch what we can do. There is so much, there's so much potential here. Watch what we can do. I'm very excited, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, without a doubt, we're at this opportunity for many things that can happen, and one is addressing the homeless situation, and I saw Alderman McMinim, he wanted to speak, but I think I could speak for everybody, that everybody wants to end the homeless in five years of functional zero, but, you know, the priority has to be the people on the streets. That's the highest priority with all of us, and, or should be, anyway, and how do we make sure that everybody's off the streets? And so, that's really been the struggle with regards to that, and that's what we need to address. Alderman McMinim?
Thanks, Mayor, for putting together a off-the-streets overnight or over a week shelter, whatever it turns out to be. It's a two-year plan. We've never had that before. It's a low-barrier shelter plan, and so, what we're talking about is ordinance 2021-306, which is on the, on the agenda for next week, committee to hold, 1.2 million. And Erica, Tim Griffin has made you two copies of that ordinance, 306, 2021-306, so you'll have your own copy.
Thank you.
Right now, you can have it, Tim Griffin's got it right there, and hopefully, you can give it, one copy to Josh Sabo if he doesn't have a copy yet.
I'm, I'm sure Josh does, yes.
Okay, all right. So, we really wanna hear what you have to say about it.
That'd be great, yeah. And I, I wanna echo what the mayor said. So, so one piece of this is that you use your data to look at the sub-demographics most in need in your community. If we look at Springfield, people who are unsheltered probably fall in several different demographics, so I, I don't disagree that unsheltered is a demographic, but like, let's say, for example, we focused on chronic homelessness, veterans and seniors. We probably would actually get most people who are unsheltered if we looked at that. So, that's what I mean when I say, I, I think Alderman Donlin, my step one, if I were you, would be to gather the information you need, using our data to be able to make the decision. And, and I think that sometimes we don't necessarily make data-driven decisions, we make decisions based on what we saw when we drove down the street collectively. So, I would highly encourage, and that's really, if you look at what Rockford did, number three on theirs was they use their data to drive good decisions and drive their resources to addressing highest needs and lowest served in their community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Sam Arnold. Is Sam Arnold here?
Not here.
Nope. Does anybody else wish to address the council? Is there a motion for adjournment?
No move.
Second.
Any objections or adjourned? Thank you.
Come on, come on. I like.
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 I like.